...to order tonight, so let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin.
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance unified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A special meeting is in order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, we'll start with you Kirsty.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Aye.
And I, aye. All right, so let's consider the next steps for the superintendent search, and Katie Russell from ISBA is here to help us through that.
Yeah, yeah. So, in front of you, you will have a few pieces of paper. This evening, I believe, we are going to go over the superintendent search timeline. You're going to review community survey questions for when you want to survey your community about what they are looking for in their new next superintendent qualities, qualifications, any kind of questions they want the next superintendent to be asked. We're also going to review a staff survey, so this one's a little different from the community survey. It's more focused on the staff inside of the Kuna School District. And then you'll want to review a salary range, and if you would like to post a salary range, you'll want to make that decision. So I've included in your packs of paper some district, a district comparison sheet that shows the salary of districts your size, districts in the area, and then districts that are in the six-day school range with Kuna School District. So, just to begin, you can kind of just work our way down the list here. The first item is the superintendent search timeline. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions as you go about this. But, so in front of you, you have the timeline. This is what I have recommended working with trustee Nixon and trustee Lowe as a timeline for what we want your superintendent search to look like. So I can just go over this quickly. If you have any concerns or questions about it, let me know, and I'm happy to, we can work through it, change dates, whatever the board would like to do, I'm happy to work with. So, the first date on this timeline is that the Board or designee execute the memorandum of understanding. What this is, is this is kind of just an agreement between ISBA and the Kuna School Board of the services that we are going to provide you, what we're asking from the Kuna School Board in return, what the Kuna School Board's asking for us in return. We have that date on there for August 15th. That has been signed and returned to us. So we're all under an agreement of what ISBA is going to be providing the Kuna School District in the superintendent search. The next item on this is that the Board is to review, make changes, and approve the timeline. The date for that is today because hopefully by the end of this meeting, you'll have approved the timeline, and that's what we will work on throughout the superintendent search, getting everything done, ensuring we're staying on track. The next one is that ISBA will coordinate with the designee or district staff together, district statistics, photographs, et cetera, to be used for promotional brochure. And we have that between August and October because that will be the timeframe of us gathering information to put in the brochure. Our goal is on the next line, October 8th, to have a draft of that brochure ready to present to you at your October 8th meeting so that you can review it, and hopefully at that time, it will be ready to then be shared online with your Board or with the rest of your community. At this meeting, also, we're going to be going over the two surveys for your community and your staff. I have provided with you the sample surveys, but you are free to add extra questions. I know that they had talked about sending, letting you know to come with some questions that you want to ask. So, at this time, once we kind of go over the rest of the timeline, you can then decide what kind of questions you want on both of those surveys, if you like the messages, if you want to add extras, things like that. And hopefully, at the end of this meeting, you'll have the surveys ready to go. We'll make those quick adjustments this week and get them back to you, then distribute to your community and staff. The goal of distributing them is by September 1st, and they will be open from September 1st to September 30th to give your community and staff ample time to answer these. The goal of these is that when you are finished collecting the surveys, you will then have answers for what kind of questions you would like to ask the superintendent in interviews. It will help you decide on qualifications for the superintendent as you're going about the process of interviewing, reviewing applications, bringing them in for district visits, things like that. And we'll give you a firm base of how to refer back to what you as the Board are looking for, what your community is looking for, what your staff is looking for, what everyone in your district is looking for in the next superintendent. After that, ISBA will work with the Board and district to determine the application form. This date is that the application will be ready to be opened on November 12th. From November until January, at this time, the Board will decide if they want to buy online advertising, so that can change. My recommendation at this point is that national online advertising isn't needed unless you're not seeing the number of applicants or quality applicants. ISBA has a full database of emails from all across the country. We have over 3,600 emails from all different states of superintendents that we email to. We also post in our work alike group of other superintendent searchers across the country, as well as posting on our Facebook, sending out postcards to that same email list. We have their mailing address as well. So, my recommendation is that we start with that, and if that's not producing the number of folks that you want to see, then we can discuss buying online advertising. From November 15th until January 31st, ISBA will actively recruit candidates. This is when we will be there advertising the surge, posting on Facebook, reaching out to our lists of applicants in the past, sharing with superintendents in Idaho and across Idaho, as well as our principal list, and anyone that has expressed interest in receiving updates about applications. As those applications come in, ISBA will be creating packets of them, reviewing their materials, ensuring that we've got everything that the Board has asked for in terms of what they want to see in the application. And then at that point in time, if they don't have everything, we will reach out to candidates and ensure that we're getting those things from them and be in constant communication with the candidates. I will be updating you as a Board on how the search is doing, how many applicants we're getting, things like that. In November through January, the district should be posting the job opening on the district website, sharing it on Facebook if you would like, encouraging your community to share it, helping ISBA share out the word. Also, in November through January, we will be reviewing all packets as I said, and we will be putting together the packets in a really easy-to-understand way for the Board so that when the time comes and the applications close, we can easily go over all of the candidates. Like I mentioned, in a past meeting, we don't weed out any of the candidates, so you're going to see every single candidate who has applied for the position. I don't live in your community. I don't feel that I'm justified to make the decision on who's right for your community, so I want you to see everyone. So, when we close the application, you will see each candidate that has applied. January 31st is the deadline that we would like to see for closing applications. After that meeting, within a few days, ISBA should have all of the application packets completed. At that time, we will then share the application packets securely with the Board in a secure platform that they can then review until they meet on February 25th to review applications. So this hopefully should give the Board ample time to review candidates, think about what they would like to see, so that way when they come to the Board meeting, they're ready to discuss what candidates they would like to move on to the next round. At that meeting on February 25th, they will review applications, and hopefully at the end of that meeting, they will have come to a decision on who they want to move forward to the next round, whether that be short semifinalist interviews, or moving forward directly to finalist district visits, things like that. It will depend on the number of applicants you have, the quality of applicants you have, things of that matter. Some of that we will not know until we open applications and start seeing what those applicants look like. From February to March, ISBA will assist the Board with reference checks on those applicants. Also, in February to March, we will review the reference checks with the executive Board. This happens in executive session, so does reviewing the applicant's materials, as that is confidential information. And then, on the back, February to March, the Board will assist, or ISBA will assist the Board with interview questions, the interview protocol and process, and this is for the final interview, district visits, community forums, what those look like. ISBA will assist the Board in helping get them scheduled, helping them run smoothly and effectively. And then, when those happen, ISBA will be there to assist the Board with the day, ensure that things are running smoothly, be there to answer questions as they go about interviews and things like that. And then hopefully, by July 1st, you will have a superintendent, and they will be ready to start. So this is my kind of recommended timeline for your search. Feel free to look it over and let me know if you have any concerns about any dates. If you feel like things need to be moved around, I'm happy to help, so.
Okay, any questions for Katie? I do have a question.
Yeah.
I've been notified by a couple people in the community who would like to serve on a search committee. How much of that, is that basically on February through March where they, the applicants come in and those introduce themselves to the community, the final three or four, whatever we decide? That would be a good time for the community to be in on, or is there another time that you recommend?
Yeah, certainly. So there are a few options to get community involvement. One is that the Board could form a complete search committee. That's not typically the first thing ISBA recommends, and the reason behind this is that hiring the next superintendent is the Board's one sole responsibility. They're their one sole employee. And so, we, and it can create some consternation when you pick certain people to be on the committee and not other certain people. So, while we are totally happy to work with that, that's not our first suggestion, but there is plenty of other opportunities to get the community involved, and that would be doing multiple community forums where maybe you bring in, and we can break these up as wide or as small as the Board and the community feel like they need. So what this is, is when you bring in like your final three or four candidates for interviews and district visits, we can schedule community forums, and we can do this with groups like, you can bring in your district administrators, you can bring in your parent-teacher association, you can bring in your education association, you can bring in your parents, you can bring in your teachers. I mean, we can narrow it down as narrow as you need, or widen it as wide as you want. So, it's really up to the district, the Board, and kind of what your preference is. But at all of these, anyone in attendance is welcome to give all kinds of feedback. We provide comment cards. We encourage them to share all of their thoughts. And then when the Board goes in to review candidates, talk about the final interviews, talk about the community forums, things like that, you would then review all of those comment cards and have discussions.
So that's a good time to involve the parents, is after we've come up with three or four and let them put some input into that. So that would be February through March.
Yes, yep.
Okay, that was my one question. Another question I have was when you said that we may have to go out to a national online advertisement. Can you give me a ballpark figure, just so I know in my head?
Yeah, they're anywhere from about $200 to $600, depending on the site that you advertise on. These would be like the National Association of School Administrators. There's some communities for people of color. There's some communities for other kinds of school district employees out there. They're national organizations, and they all just kind of have a different rate for advertising. So depending on like who you're trying to target, the price may look different.
Yeah, that's just my question for further down the line. Any questions?
Well, to piggyback off that, so when we're doing our search, I thought we were doing it nationwide, so what does that look like if it's not?
It's still nationwide, yeah. So we have a list of over 3,600 applicants that are not applicants, superintendents from all across the country that we send promotional materials to, we send postcards to them, we send more than one email to them a month about our openings. Every time we have an opening, we send it to them, so they're still getting it. We also, I'm a member of the National Association of Superintendent Searchers, so any state school board association who does superintendent searching is a member of this group. And we have a forum that we share all of our openings on, and they then share on their websites as well, so.
As I say, my understanding for this is if we don't feel like we're getting enough applicants.
Or it's just something extra.
Yes.
It's something extra. It's not something that is, that's my understanding.
Yeah, and our, the, I should mention too, our application platform that we use, it's called Revellis. And all of these associations across the country that also use this application platform, which is almost all of the school boards' associations that do superintendent searches, they also use this. And what's great about this platform is that when we post Kuna School District Superintendent, it will show up in other states. So if an applicant in Montana gets on to apply for somewhere in Montana, they can see, they'll see that there's an opening in Idaho, and if it's something they're interested in, they can just click on that link and go right to it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion that we accept this timeline that's written at this time?
I will make a motion that we accept the superintendent, superintendent search timeline.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All right, let's do it. Hillary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
And I for me. All right, next thing is the community survey questions, and I know that we were emailed these ahead of time, so I don't know how you want to handle that, or how you want to do it, but I'm going to leave it up to you, Katie.
Yeah, so I, you may have already seen this, but the community survey timeline, this one is four questions. It looks like this. It's got, check below what best describes you. Parent caregiver of Kuna School District, employee of Kuna School District, student of Kuna School District, other. And then there's, please check the top-rated professional qualities you are looking for in a new superintendent of the Kuna School District. There's, please check the top-rated personal qualities you are looking for in the Kuna School District's next superintendent. And then, please share a question you would like to ask with the superintendent candidates. So this is just kind of our, our normal survey that we do as a community. We want to make it really quick and easy so that as many community members can take it as, as hopefully possible. It doesn't take them much time. Three out of the four questions are just click answers, so it's really easy and simple. But then the final question gives you as the Board the opportunity to kind of hear what your community is looking for in the next superintendent. It gives you, I've found that it, it gives us a lot of great ideas to work with when doing interviews, creating community forum questions.
Kind of gives us a map of where we're headed and what we, we need to be looking for.
Yep, yeah. So this will help you. On the brochure that I had mentioned in the timeline, one of the things that we like to include in that is kind of the list of qualities that the Kuna School District is looking for in their next superintendent. So this gives you a great starting place of how to create those qualities, what you're looking for. You as the Board may have qualities, but you also have your whole community who, you care about their opinion as well, and what they want to see in the next superintendent. So this gives the, the candidates that are thinking about applying a great way to see kind of what everyone's expecting of them when they come to the Kuna School District. So, those are the four questions we typically recommend, but you are more than welcome to add more to this one if you would like. I know we're also talking about a staff.
Can we stop at this one just for a second? Are there any questions about this one? I do have some, a couple comments that we'd like to make. First of all, and number two, I like the fact that it is quick. For someone taking a survey, we need quick information, concise, so we want them to take it. We don't want them to say, oh, I got five or 10 minutes, I have to give up. But on number two, the top-rated official qualities, we named five. I want, I wondered if we should have something about, do you have experience, or do you want to see experience improving student performance and bringing our school achievement scores up, something to that effect of our achievement? I don't know how you guys know, I'm just throwing that out, but I'd like to see that as one of the things. I didn't see that in there.
Yeah.
I think it's important to me that we are striving to, to have our students continually increasing in, in what they're learning. And I, I think that's an important thing. Do you like that? Just something along that line. I'm not saying that's, I'm not really good at wording. I only top the third or fourth grade, so I can only do this much, but something along that line. Or closing the achievement gap or something, just whatever you can come up with that would show, give people an idea that that might be something they'd like to see as a community.
Absolutely.
And then, on the second one, it talks about the qualities that we're looking for in the superintendent.
On the second, sorry.
Or three, it's number three. Sorry, second one. Number three. I think it's important that a superintendent's involved in community activities, just not here at the school, but actually reaching out to the community. I still feel that Kuna's a small community with that feeling, and I would like something added to that.
So it says like recognizes the value of high visibility in the schools and the community?
Yeah, but I want it involved. So maybe you can change that word to involvement.
Like what's involved then?
To me, involvement means, you know, that they maybe purchase things downtown, that they're part of,
Oh, I see.
You know, that they're involved in the community, that they're going to the games, that they're in Kuna days, that they're part of this community, involved in, you know, they might join, I don't know, the Rotary Club, or, I, I don't know. But just something to be involved, not just coming and going from the community. In other words, living somewhere else, and you can live somewhere else. You could live in Meridian, but, because Meridian's part of Kuna, but I just want to see some type of involvement with the superintendent that they would, that they could select that as something. I know at one time, that was a huge thing here. People wanted the superintendent to live here and be part of the community. But we've grown, and I understand that. We're not the small little town we were. But something along those lines, does that make sense to you, Hillary?
It does, yeah.
Going to meetings, maybe attending church. I don't know, I just.
I'm happy to add that. I feel like it's covered in this one, but it's no harm to add another.
Either that or just put it, which one is it?
I like how this one says high visibility in the schools and community, but if we want to add another one.
I just like the word involved.
Involvement, that's fine.
But could you put involvement in there maybe?
High visibility and, and involvement?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Recognize the value of high visibility in schools and involvement in the community.
Oh, yeah, I like that.
And I'm, and I'm fine with that. I just think that that means be a part of it. So those are my two. Two things. Anybody else?
So one thing that I thought of was, as I was reading the qualifications, and it says up to five, I have like six or eight as a parent. So could they number them, like 17 being the highest and like one being the lowest of what they think the qualities look at, as opposed to just picking five?
We could certainly change how this question is asked, and rather than it just being a checkbox, we can instead put the, I think, I'll have to talk to our, or the gal who creates our surveys for us, but I think we could create it as like a number system where you can number it, one, two, three, four, five, and just go down. The reason it is that the way it is right now is it just makes it really easy for people to just go.
That's what I was going to say.
So we could certainly also just, rather than saying top five, we could remove the top five and just say, select all of the qualities that are important to you. Because when we get the survey back, what it looks like is like, let's say, has a positive experience dealing with conflict and problem management is like the most commonly answered one. It'll show us like which ones were selected the most, all the way down to which ones were selected the least out of all of them. So we can see it that way, but if you would like to see everyone's numbers individually, we can probably do that as well.
I just think it's one, it's a limit to someone not picking something that's important because they only have five choices, instead of giving them the opportunity to pick all of the ones that are.
Instead of rank ordering, because there might be parents who get confused, and what if we set up to eight? Because then you know what the top qualities are. That's what you want to know, am I right? Instead of taking time to rank order them, because some parents might get down and go, I don't know after this what I want.
Yeah, so what it, what it looks like when you get responses is people will select up to five or up to eight, however many you limit them to. And then what it does is it will include all of the questions. So you won't see like if only three people answered one of the questions. You'll still see that only three people answered that one question as their top five qualities they're looking for, but it will just be like lower on the list of the survey. So let's say the first five on here are the first five that everyone finds the most important to your district. Those ones would show up the first, but then let's say this one was six, it would show up as six. So you can kind of see.
How they're ranked.
How they're ranked based on who's selecting what. But we can also limit the surveys based on survey takers. We, we can't see who the survey takers were, but we can see their individual selections. So, if that's something you want to look at, we can also provide a more detailed report that has each survey taker's responses of their top five or top eight. But when you get it, it's kind of condensed, so it's just a little easier to read through and understand. But we can give you the survey in whatever way you want it.
Well, I'm just thinking from a parent perspective, there's some times where I didn't do the survey because I couldn't pick all the options I wanted to, so I just didn't do it.
Yeah.
Because then I was like, why can't I even pick the ones I want, so.
From a parent perspective. I kind of think it's good to make people pick their, like really think about their top five, because I feel like a lot of people would just mark most of these because they're all good things. So I wonder how it works.
You want to know the most important things.
Yeah, and I do think like ranking them is a nice idea, except for that when you get to like seven, eight, nine, like, it's hard to be like, well, is it seventh most important to me, or ninth most important to me?
Yeah.
When you, top three is maybe easier to rank, and then after that, I feel like it's a little bit difficult in the survey, but.
I kind of, I agree with Hillary. If we just did the top five or six, or whatever we decide, then it makes it easy to see, oh, these are the ones. And I don't want anyone to say, wait, this is too hard for me to rank all these and put these all in order. I want it to be easy.
And there is an option on the survey for all of these that says other. So if you like found some more that were important to you, maybe more than five, and you wanted them to know, you could select your top four, and then in other, you could write whatever else was important to you, and we see all of those responses.
Is there a way to put that on the other, that you can put more?
Yeah, we can add extra words to that if you, if you have more that you would like us to know. We can make, change that other to whatever you want it to say. So, if you, if you want me to say, if you have more than five options that you would like us to know about, please include them here.
In the other.
Yeah.
I think a good fifth question, if we could, if we dared to add a fifth question that would be open-ended, would be like, what would you like the Board to know about hiring a superintendent? You know, like, what would you like, you know, some way, I don't, we don't have to say it like that, but, like this is, what question would you like to ask the superintendent candidates, and I don't know.
So you're saying, say it again, Hillary.
Like it'd be a message to the, to the Board, like about, if they wanted to describe something, or tell us something in particular about how their, what their thoughts are about it. I don't know, if that's too many questions, or.
Well, I, I think they need to know they don't have to fill that out.
Yeah, it's optional.
Optional.
I don't know, because then maybe if they like have another thing that they wanted to mark in one of these, like Kirsty said, they could describe it below.
Yeah, I, I feel comfortable. Kirsty, do you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, because I mean, there's 17 options, so I just thought five was like, eh, that's, you know.
My question five would be like, do you have anything else you want to say to the Board?
Is there more that you want to let us know? I think that that's good.
Absolutely.
I'm fine with that. All right, so let's go ahead and go on with the other one. I, I can't, I can't recognize her, I'm sorry. Do we have delegates tonight, by the way?
No.
Okay. That's what I need to know. Sorry. So, go ahead.
I believe that is an action item. I don't know if you want to take action on it, or wait until I make the changes to take action on it.
I think we can make a motion with the changes, can't we? With the changes discussed, when we get ready to do that motion, that I wanted to, since it's all the survey questions, I wanted to get the other.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
I think it's like B is the community survey questions, and C.
Okay, so I would, okay, so I guess it's separate then. So, do I have a motion that we accept the? So, do I have a motion that we accept the survey questions with the recommendations that we've made and changes? So.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more thing.
Oh, it's fine.
I was, I'm, I just, question number one there, can they mark more than one? Like if they are both a parent and an employee or something like that, can they mark both?
Well, it says, oh, that best describes.
We can certainly change that one so they can mark both. Right now it's one, but then typically if they're like a parent and a teacher, they usually select other.
Other.
Other box. It's not popping up on this printed copy, but it usually has a, a box where you could put, I am a parent and a teacher. But I can change that, it's really easy to change that same, so that they can select parent and teacher.
Then they wouldn't feel like they were taking the survey as one of the.
Yep, absolutely. I'll just make an update to that, so they can select whatever.
Okay.
I'll make a motion if everybody's fine with that one.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we accept the community survey questions with the changes to question one and add question five. And the addition to question three.
Well, and two, because other, we're gonna put that they're allowed to put other numbers.
Okay, all of the outline changes?
How specific, you go, right?
I am.
You need to be, yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All right, start with you, Kirsty.
Aye.
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 An aye for me. All right, so let's move on to the survey for the KSD staff.
So this sample survey has five questions on it, and again, we can add more questions or remove questions based on how you feel about the questions that have already been provided. This one would only go to CUNA School District staff. So it's kind of more focused on what staff would like to see in their next superintendent, they'll be the leader of the district. So question one is, what do you feel is the most important skill or characteristic the superintendent needs to be successful in our district? How could the new superintendent go about establishing good public relations within the district and community? What core values should we look for in a new superintendent? How would a superintendent foster a relationship of respect and collaboration with certified and classified staff? And then please share a question you would like to ask the superintendent candidates. So these are all, fill in the blanks, so.
And does this include administration too?
Yeah, but we'll go to all district staff.
I think it says it up there somewhere, I thought I read it. Maybe not.
So is number one, I'm not an English teacher, so. Somebody in here must be, but is number one written properly? Skill or characteristics? Like is one singular and one, it sounds just funny to me, but.
Which you feel is the most important skill or characteristic?
Wouldn't it be skills? Like the most important skills and, or characteristics or skill or characteristic? Like one, is it both singular or am I wrong?
Or skill or characteristic? Well, but you want, I think you want more than one if they want to give one.
The most important skills and characteristics.
I think skills and/or characteristics.
And/or characteristics.
Put and/or. Yeah, and I have a couple of things too that I wanted to discuss with the board to see what they thought. One of them was, what kind of changes would you like to see the new superintendent bring to the district? As a teacher or as an administrator? So I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Say it when we're done.
What kind of changes would you like to see a new superintendent bring to our district? In other words, what are some of the changes maybe that they would bring or that they would like to see that superintendent bring as an educator? And then also, one of the things I've noticed in the past, having gone through some superintendents, they come in and they change programs that some of the teachers and administrators really do like. So a question would be, what programs would you like to see a new superintendent continue with? So whatever program that is. You know, like a program where they're working on GT, I'd like to see that continued.
Handwriting without tears.
Yeah, or whatever, but you know, what kind of program do you want to make sure that that, I think it's important for us.
For sure.
Collaboration with the.
Because we don't.
KEA. Collaborative bargaining, you know, there's certain things that they may not have that, that may be a part of it. So that's one question I have.
Yeah, I think that's good.
And then the other one was, but it kind of ties into four. What do you see as a role and responsibility for the new superintendent? But, you know, what kind of role do you want that superintendent and responsibility to have? But it kind of ties in with number four, so if you want to combine that, I think a little bit, I don't know. But those are some things that I kind of thought might be good to add. So I don't know what you guys think.
I like the first couple of ideas that you had. The third one, I think maybe.
Yeah, it is kind of covered in number four. So I didn't know, and I kind of got an arrow to that, just it breaks it down. Yeah, so, and I'm fine, I'm just bringing that up, but I'd like to see some of that put in.
So seven questions?
Uh, well.
And are all of them optional then? Like you don't have to fill out all of them?
Nope.
So would there be an, like on the, just kind of like the other one, should we have kind of an open ended, like is there anything else you'd like to tell, you know, talk about? Or anything else that's covered, like something open?
Isn't that the last one, number five, or is that anything?
Number five, please share a question you would like to ask the superintendent candidates. We could also add, or is there anything else you would like the board to know?
I, I like that.
So that there's not eight questions if you choose to add these other two? Or we could add that as another question as well, whatever the board's preferences.
I kind of like making it concise, but I do like those two. Just because I've been through some of this and it's important to know. You know, if they're gonna do away with collaborative bargaining, teachers need to know that. Very, you know, and maybe the superintendent needs to know, we want to keep that. You know, what do we want to keep? So I just want to ask that of them.
Well, and it can, we can kind of see a pattern of if one teacher says something or, you know, fifteen or something.
Right. Right. Yeah, exactly, that's what we're looking for, for sure. So that would be my changes. Any other discussion or changes or anything else?
Well, I like your ideas.
Thank you. So that would be seven.
Yeah.
Questions altogether. All right, do I have a motion that we accept the KSD staff survey questions with the changes made?
I'll make a motion to accept the KSD staff survey questions with the changes.
Which would be seven.
Seven questions, I have two questions.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, Hillary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kirsty? An aye for me. All right, we're moving right along. And now to an important one, the salary range.
Final, so you have in front of you this sheet with some salary comparisons on it. So on the front of the sheet, which is the big, bigger box, the first comparison is superintendent salary comparison by school district enrollment. So in the far left box, you'll see what number CUNA School District, and you're highlighted in yellow, what number you are based on enrollment, so you're number thirteen. So we have on this list, numbers one through forty-one for district enrollment. Then if you flip to the back, we have superintendent salary comparison by IHSA's six A classification. So these are just some districts across the state who are also six A. I tried to pick your competitors just so you could kind of see what they're paying their superintendent. And then finally, the last one is superintendent salary comparison by salary. So this is based on how your district ranks salary wise, based on what you're currently paying your superintendent. So on this list, you are ranked number twenty-three, and we have from number fourteen to number thirty-four listed there. My recommendations for when you decide a salary, if you decide a salary, it's not something you have to post, however, I do highly encourage you to post some form of a salary. It helps you be transparent with your community, it helps you be transparent with your applicants. It gives applicants an idea of what they should expect when they do apply so that they feel confident in wanting to apply for something, when they know they are leaving their job and can still have a competitive salary if they're going elsewhere. So I'd at least suggest having a base salary. I would just suggest keeping it competitive with districts, especially living in the Treasure Valley with other districts in your area. Just so you're staying competitive with others around the city.
Okay, I did talk with Elmer, so I'm going to give her credit. Thank you, Elmer, for all that you do for us. We kind of looked at this together, and we threw out Boise and West Data because there's no way we will ever be able to do that, nor can we even pretend to do that. And then we went ahead and looked at the average without those two. And the average, I believe that you came up with, Elmer, was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars, which.
Yes.
That's correct, right?
Based on which ones?
Based on the ones in the valley, go ahead.
Valley View, Nampa, Caldwell, the districts within the driving distance. Let's say if the house here is too expensive and a person has to buy outside of CUNA boundaries, what districts can a person drive within like thirty to forty minutes? Kind of pick the, the valley area, you know, we, we didn't go too far as Pocatello or Idaho Falls, you know. But yeah, that's kind of the average.
Right. I, I'd like to see us do what I would call a window, like between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and sixty, depending on their qualifications. And, and that, to kind of give that window, that's my thoughts. I have a hard time with this, because as you know, we just did two point three million. And this really, I'm just gonna be honest, bothers me. But in order to be competitive, in order to get people in, I, I feel like we need to have that window. I, I'm, I'm, what are, what are your feelings?
I'm just kind of looking at enrollment. And, you know, those that are up in one sixty are definitely close. Most of them are, you know, have quite a bit higher enrollment than we do. So I mean, I think it would definitely be competitive.
Yeah, I think if we had a window too, depending on.
Yeah.
What their experience is.
I think a window is a good idea.
I'm okay with that.
So, and we did pay Wendy a hundred and forty-nine, so that hundred and fifty is still in the ballpark.
So what's your window that you're thinking?
One fifty to one sixty.
Cause one fifty-six kind of popped in my mind, so.
Well, that was, that is the average kind of that Elmer did for us, so I appreciate that.
And then I guess the contract days are something that weigh in a little bit too here, right?
Those are up to us, yeah. And I, and I just found out about those, as you know, in our meeting the other day. I thought they were all the same, so I was kind of taken aback by that.
Can you allow me on that, so you understand what the contract?
Contract days is how many days you'll work for the school district. And if you look at that, I, okay, when I became a teacher, it was one hundred and eighty days, and it turned to hours. And I just thought everybody in the district state did the same amount. So it surprised me when I looked at the contract days, I didn't realize that there was that much of a change when we got together to look at this.
Like Caldwell is probably an outlier here where they work fifteen days less and pay quite a bit more for lower enrollment.
Yeah.
They're definitely an outlier, I think.
Those are things that, you know, the contract days that we've had are two hundred and forty-five, which is right in there. So it's more than West Data and Boise, but less than some of the others, so. And some of it, I think, depends too, and I don't think we're looking at the rural, at the rural school districts. Sometimes you have to have people come in from, out of your district to do your superintendent job. So it's a little bit different in the smaller ones, am I correct of that?
Yeah, the smaller ones have the, the struggle with trying to entice people to want to come.
To even come, so that it's like, I'll do it and then I'm leaving or whatever. Anyway, I just thought that was interesting. Any other comments, discussion, or anything?
I, I like the window of one fifty to one sixty.
Okay. Do I have a motion then that we make a salary range between one hundred and fifty, one hundred and sixty, and knowing that it depends on their experience and, and what, what they bring to the table? Does that sound okay? Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we accept a salary range for the new superintendent position of between one hundred and fifty thousand and one hundred and sixty thousand, depending on whatever we decide after.
Yeah. Well, that, that's our main goal, that we do here. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, and any other discussion? All right, Hillary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And.
Aye.
Thank you, Kirsty, and aye for me too. All right. I just want to thank you so much for coming. And we've got a start on this, we have a schedule, so I appreciate that. We'll be looking at that schedule, and I'll be meeting with you along with Deanne and doing our next, our next movement. All right, I think, unless anybody else has anything else, I think we can adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I second.
And Kirsty?
Aye.
Aye.
An aye for me.
Perfect.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
We have a conference meeting. We have a conference meeting.